Good evening and welcome to the special city council meeting, December fifteenth, two thousand nine. Call to order, please.
Councilmember O'Connell.
Here.
Councilmember Ibera.
Here.
Vice Mayor Medina.
Here.
Mayor Ruane.
Here. And I'd like our city attorney, please, to let us leave the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Item number three on the agenda is public comment and items not on the agenda. It is the council's policy to refer matters raised in this forum to staff for investigation and or action where applicable. The Brown Act prohibits the council from discussing or acting upon any matter not agendaized pursuant to state law. Anyone wish to speak to the council? Item number four, conduct of business, why we're all here. We're going to conduct interviews of applicants to fill vacant city council, a vacant city council seat. Prior to the actual interviews, I have a few items we need to take care of. First of all, I would like to thank on behalf of the entire city council, the applicants, for offering their time and their particular expertise to assist us over the next two years. Thank you very much. Very important job. Second, we will entertain any comments, should there be any, by members of the public regarding the interviews after all of the applicants have spoken and the council has completed the interview process. Third, I have asked the city manager to highlight very briefly a few items we feel need to be shared with the applicants at this time. City manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. These comments are, should be well-known by you, the city council. My comments are primarily for the applicants and for the public generally who might be watching tonight as this meeting is being televised live to the community as our regular city council meetings all are. Tonight you have before you a very important and a very important decision or opportunity for preparation for a very important decision and one which does not occur very often in San Bruno. This particular situation having occurred, last occurred many years ago when now councilmember Ibera was appointed to the city council. That being the case, I thought it would be prudent to make a few observations for, primarily again for the benefit of the public. First and foremost, the job of a city council member is and contains many aspects that may not be readily apparent to casual observers. It is a much more substantial time and energy commitment than appearing two times a month for a regular city council meeting. There are in fact numerous special meetings, study sessions that occur in conjunction with another meeting, as well as subcommittee assignments which require councilmembers to participate with staff directly on a particular topic of importance to the city. And beyond that, councilmembers are often called upon to represent the city and the city council in regional assignments on regional bodies and task forces for the better, broader interests of San Bruno. That said, I think it can be expected that your assignment would represent a very substantial commitment of time and energy to the citizens of San Bruno, a very important one, obviously. I also want to observe and to make sure that there is no confusion that city councilmembers are required immediately upon being seated on the city council and annually thereafter to file a statement of economic interests as required by the Fair Political Practices Commission. That statement is fairly lengthy and it is, the results of that document are public information available for inspection by any member of the public. I have samples of the Form 700, which is required to be filled out, available if any of the applicants are interested in just taking a quick look at that tonight. And lastly, while there are many other relevant requirements to service as a city council member, both here and elsewhere throughout our state, there is one additional small item of note, and that is that councilmembers, rather in this case, members of the redevelopment agency, are not allowed generally to participate in decisions, important ones for San Bruno, in situations where property ownership interests exist within the redevelopment project area. I also have a copy of the redevelopment project area map in case anybody is interested in taking a look at that. With that, Mr. Mayor, that concludes my general comments, and as always, staff stands ready to support you in this important process and to work with the new city council member once he is appointed to provide briefing and information that will be necessary to assist their quickly getting up to speed with the important issues facing San Bruno.
Great, thank you very much. Let's do the interviews now. The council has, just so you know, all of the information you have already provided, so we've read it thoroughly probably a couple of times. We would ask that you introduce yourselves in a maybe a two or three minute introduction, followed by councilmember comments and questions. And I would like to begin with Mr. Biassadi, then Mr. Chase, as both of these applicants have a planning commission meeting at seven o'clock in case we get drawn out here. And the remainder, we will interview in alphabetical order. So, Mr. Biassadi.
Good evening, Mayor Ruane and City Council.
A little closer.
Good evening.
Great.
My name's Rick Biassadi. I've been a resident in San Bruno for twenty-four years, and I've made the decision now that I've retired to remain here in San Bruno. This is my community, this is my home. I've worked here for ten years, and I've developed one-on-one relationships with a lot of the folks that have been customers of mine. I understand the commitments as far as time that are required of a city council member. As a planning commissioner, I'm familiar with the piles of staff reports that show up that one needs to read through and study to be prepared for meetings. I've also been involved in community regional obligations. I've gone to a lot of conferences for the planning commission representing the city. Like I said, I am now retired and I have the time to participate fully in city council activities. I've been serving this council as a planning commissioner since two thousand and four. I chaired the planning commission from two thousand six to two thousand seven. As you know, the planning commission is the only board or commission that has deals with due process. The commission, on behalf of city council, create, creates binding decisions regarding businesses and property for citizens in San Bruno. I've volunteered to sit on almost every architectural review meeting. I've participated in subcommittee meetings, for example, the general plan update and the residential design guidelines meetings. I understand and have demonstrated that I can deliberate in a public venue. I understand the importance of transparency in our activities and our decisions in front of the public. I've worked really hard to make sure that citizens are heard and their ideas are reiterated so that they can be clearly understood. I already have a Form 700 on file. I've completed SB 1234 ethics training, and I believe that I have the respect of my fellow commissioners, and I can carry that forward with me to the plan, at the city council. If appointed, my position on city, on the planning commission would become available, allowing someone else to become involved in city politics. And finally, I believe that I've done the job that the city council has tasked me with, and I perform those duties with the utmost diligence. And seeing as how we have so much to do tonight, I'll keep my comments that brief.
Okay. Any questions? Comments? Irene?
I have a question.
Of course.
What do you feel about a new library for the city?
Right off the top.
Right off the top. I don't have a specific answer. I know when I joined the planning commission, it was a very steep learning curve. I'm happy to see the city develop new properties and new firehouses and new libraries. I would have no objection to it if we could afford to figure out how to do it.
Do you feel that there's a need for one? Do you feel that we should be looking at it a different way, kind of?
I think we could use a new library, yes.
Okay.
Questions?
Ken?
Oh, I'll go. I'm going to ask two. First one is going to be technical. I feel you know what's going on because being on the planning commission, I believe you understand the development issues and, you know, the general plan and. How do you feel that great, the great separation, what do you see happening to San Bruno? What's your understanding of the benefits or non-benefits of the great separation?
Well, I think the great separation with the train station there would improve the downtown area. It would give us a basis to expand our redevelopment of downtown that we've all talked about. It'll give us an opportunity to expand densities and new opportunities for business along the downtown corridor. It'll open up our downtown to people coming in via rail to visit our city.
Okay. Now, let me ask you, how do you really feel about San Bruno?
Honestly?
What's your, what's your real feeling about San Bruno?
I'll be completely honest, this is my home. I've chosen to live here. I recently retired, and I could've gone several different places, Palm Springs, was thinking of Oregon for a while too, but this is home. I have friends here, staff's been wonderful to work with. I've worked for ten years, one-on-one with people in the grocery business, and I have a family and a circle of friends here in San Bruno. This is home, I'm not going anywhere. This is my community. I feel very strongly about that.
Everything's perfect?
I'm happy here, yes.
Come on.
No, seriously, I'm very happy here.
Okay, thank you.
Vice Mayor.
I guess one, one just quick question. As far as, what do you see as our biggest challenge upcoming in two thousand and ten?
Probably keeping the budget balanced at this point. I know there's negotiations coming up with the police department. I don't know all the details of that, but I know that we have serious budget issues to keep under consideration, so I'm happy to learn and, you know, progress with that.
Thank you.
Have you ever been involved in labor negotiations in your position as, as manager?
Yes.
You have. Do you deal directly with unions or?
Yes.
What is, what is your, what was your capacity?
As a manager, dealing directly with unions.
Okay. Negotiated things like fringe benefits and?
No, those were done on a corporate level.
On a corporate level?
Yeah.
Okay. And you, you managed staff within, I know you worked up at Lunardi's for a number of years.
Correct.
Staff and schedules and all different kinds of things like that.
Yes, and the day-to-day operations.
What was your hourly commitment up there?
About forty-five, fifty hours a week.
Okay. All different hours, evenings, days, weekends, the whole thing? Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Anything else?
If I could ask, based on the last two questions, what is your, what is your understanding about the budget and how the city is run? You know, the revenue and the expenses, things, I mean, have, have you gotten into how, how the, how the money, how the tax money comes in and where it comes from and how it gets distributed? Do you have a basic understanding?
A basic understanding? I've had to review the capital improvement budget for several years now, so I have a feeling I understand how that all falls together after having reviewed that budget and then passed it and approved it and sent it on to you folks.
And do you have any suggestions with the challenges that we're faced, since, you know, we may not be able to turn to any other, you know, option of cutting back or reducing or, I mean, what is your feeling as far as the next step that we may be faced with, possibly layoffs or, or reduced services?
It's a difficult question. It's a hard one to balance. I've spoken a lot to staff members, and I've listened to a lot of the comments made about the current budget. I think there's opportunities for us in various places. We have utilities that we have, the garbage company, the cable company. There's opportunities for us to create new sources of revenue if we're careful. I think we need to look and explore. I've got the time now to give it some serious consideration and look to see what we can do besides cutting services and laying people off. You know, I really feel that there's, there's got to be some possibilities out there. Thank you. You're welcome.
You've probably read or heard about potential consolidations of police, fire down the road.
Yes.
It's, it's been talked about very heavily at the managerial position, you know, positions, and now it's coming to the councils. Any feelings on that consolidation, keeping our own independence? How do you feel about that?
I'm okay with consolidation. I feel that we need to maintain some sort of semblance of being able to promote our folks up that chain so that there is some reason for them to want to continue to stay with us, so that those folks that are working for us in the police and fire department can get promoted up the ladder, so that we can preserve these folks that are working so hard for us.
All right, thank you. Anything else? Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
And thanks for your service to the city.
Thank you again for the opportunity to serve.
Great. Mr. Chase.
Good evening, Mayor Ruane and councilmembers. My name is Kevin Chase. I've been a resident here in San Bruno for thirteen years now. I've had the great opportunity, as has Mr. Biassadi, to sit on the planning commission. I was appointed in two thousand. You know, during that time, I learned a great deal about the city, how to deal with difficult situations where we, for example, don't really have a view ordinance, but it's very important to the residents that, you know, their homes or views are not, you know, impaired by some, you know, monster home. Ways to deal with that, ways to actually one-on-one with the people and try and resolve their differences before it becomes, you know, something that is out of control and cannot be repaired. I feel that one of my strengths is certainly the ability to listen, to learn, and to bring a sense of common sense, if you will. There's always the book, things that you have to go by, but then there's also the areas in which, you know, common sense needs to prevail as well. You know, I, I didn't write anything down, and it's definitely different being on this side of the dais than it is at seven o'clock.
Sit up here, talk.
No, it's okay. You know, I've been a volunteer on the clean sweep. I volunteer for AYSO coaching. Yeah, I've, I've done a lot of things in the community that, that I totally enjoy doing, and to me, that, that's an important part. You need to enjoy what you're doing if you're going to go into it wholeheartedly. When I first was appointed planning commissioner, I quite honestly didn't know exactly what I was getting into, and it was somewhat of an eye-opener, but it's been a great experience, and I thoroughly enjoy it. Having said that, with this opportunity here that, that has arisen, and again, as the city manager stated, doesn't happen very often, I felt at this time I would be a very good candidate for the vacant position, and understanding the commitment that is required, I felt that I could certainly fulfill that and would look forward to with a great amount of gusto to do that.
Great. Questions for Mr. Chase? Ken?
Go ahead. Okay. Let me, let me just say this, and I meant to say it with, with Rick. Both of your service on, Rick and yourself on the planning commission has been exceptional, and I compliment you on, on, on your years, both, both of your years of service on the planning commission. I've seen you both in action and followed you, so it'll, it'll be tough to replace, replace you if, if you do still get selected. Kevin, in your, in your application, one, you call yourself a community activist, and if you might comment on that, but also you, you state that you like to create opportunities for employment and housing. I believe we're, you know, I, I think we're doing okay with housing, and, you know, and you're familiar with things through the planning commission and what we're doing with housing. What are your ideas on creating opportunities and employment in this town?
Well, yeah, I, I happen to sit on the subcommittee for the downtown corridor, and I see a great opportunity down there, as does, I'm sure, all the other members who and the general public who sit on that, on that committee. We have an opportunity to expand down there, to create jobs, to create some housing, if you will, as well. There's been several ideas that have been tossed around at our meetings. I think for one, it would be a great asset to the city, and if we can move forward with that, although we all understand that right now in the economic times, it's, it's a little bit difficult, but certainly that'll change, I, I think there's going to be great opportunities down there for employment, for small businesses, for, you know, shop owners, you know, whatever. I mean, I, I believe that it's, it's there. Might not be tomorrow, might not be, you know, middle of next year, but it will turn, and I think, you know, we need to be there at the forefront and, and grab those opportunities and grab those developers and those potential employers and bring them into our city, instead of letting them, you know, drift away. I mean, you drive down the Old Camino, and quite honestly, it's kind of scary. Look at all the, you know, businesses that are closed and boarded up or whatever, and, you know, it's difficult times, but I'm sure we'll get through it.
Irene?
Thank you. The role of a planning commission is one thing, and the role of a city council person is another. How do you see the role of a city council person? What do you see as our job?
Basically, as, as a steward, if you will, for the citizens of San Bruno. We have a great responsibility to represent them on a daily basis in everything you do, everything you say, all your actions, you know, you're constantly under the microscope, if you will. Before I had the current job that I have now, I was in a somewhat of a similar situation, although wasn't as a councilmember, it was as a union representative. And I understand that everything that you say, people will try and either twist it or, you know, use it to their advantage, so you need to be very careful in, in the way in which you answer questions or, you know, present a plan. You don't want to present something that you know you can't deliver, just, you know, to get off the hot seat. It doesn't work. It, it's a great responsibility and, and a great burden, but it's also a great opportunity for somebody to represent their city and their fellow residents and be very proud of that, and I would be.
Thank you.
Question that was asked last, the last gentleman, which I'd like to ask of you, is your view or thoughts on consolidation of services, whether it's fire, police, or others, with the neighboring jurisdictions?
You know, I went through consolidation, if you will, in a previous career, and it's not always a, a pleasant transition. Sometimes it is necessary, and it's very difficult to convince the members or the, you know, the people of that particular group, whether it's fire, police, or, you know, whomever it may be, that it's in their best interest. Quite honestly, not having seen any of the financial papers or whatever and how that would all work out if it actually is necessary, I would prefer that it was kept separate. However, having said that, there are, you know, circumstances, and again, in these economic times where, you know, you're driven to, to do the right thing, to, you know, continue the public services that the residents need and expect, and yet be able to do it in such a financial way that, you know, you're not going to go bankrupt or, you know. So it's, yeah, that's a very good question. I would certainly like to see how, what the options are, you know, to give a definitive answer, but basically, I do like to keep things separate if it's at all possible, keep their own autonomy.
Thank you. And Kevin, you feel you'd, you'd be able to, to make the time commitment?
Yes, Mayor Ruane, I do believe I, I could. I do work in Half Moon Bay, and sometimes like tonight, coming over here and trying to jump in the shower and get down, I, I cut it down to the wire quite often, to be honest, as most people probably know. But as I also know, you know, I, I do make all the meetings, and along with Commissioner Biassadi, you know, I think we've sat on, I don't know how many of the ARC reviews, and I had a great time doing it as well. The, the commitment, again, it's, it is not something that is foreign to me, it's not something that I would shy away from. I would, you know, just look at it as a great opportunity for, for myself to, you know, serve the city that, that I truly love too. I mean, it's a great place to live. You know, it's, it's got problems, as every other city does. It's not perfect, we're not, you know, living in Camelot, but it's a lot better than most.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Yes, I, Kevin, I, fourteen years ago, when I came on this, was appointed on the city council, I made some tough decisions, controversial decisions, but it seemed that the most overwhelming thing that I had to deal with, issues I had to deal with, was getting right into the budget. And it's kind of daunting when the first budget you get, you know, when, when you're not expecting it, you get handed a four-inch-thick binder, and now we're two binders. What is, talk about, you know, what your knowledge of the budget is and the running of this city, and based on what the vice mayor asked you as far as consolidation, tell me what, if you were, if you're faced with staff saying absolutely no, we're against consolidation, but then big chunk of money to save, you know, and so how, how would you deal with, you know, with, with that dilemma? Saving money versus the morale of, you know, of, of your city employees? And let, let, tell me, you know, let me know what you know about the budget right now.
First off, dollars and cents, I, I don't really know a whole lot about what the budget is, you know, I mean, dollars and figures. However, you know, in the past, I have, you know, dealt with budgets, and I currently deal with one at work as well, but nothing is daunting or as large as I'm sure the city's. I have a vague, you know, knowledge of it, but, but really no specifics, Councilman Ibera, but, you know, numbers are, are numbers, and whether they have a lot of zeros behind them or just, you know, a few, it's still a matter of figuring it out, how much is coming in, how much is going out, and, you know, where you need to tighten the belt, if you That's, that's basically the part of the, of the budget that, that I suppose I know about. It's pretty vague, as I said, but it's a learning curve, and if I were to get, you know, if I was fortunate enough to be appointed, the first thing I would do, faced with the two binders versus when you first had one, would certainly be to come to you and ask you for your help, you know, and your advice, as the other councilmembers as well. You know, I mean, hey, you're, when you're the new guy on the block, you need to, you need to ask questions. You can't be afraid to ask questions. You know, the only stupid question is one that isn't asked. So, you know, certainly I, I would not be afraid to ask questions. I know when I first came on the planning commission, Commissioner Mary, you know, she was so helpful to me, she, anything, anything you need, and I, I took that, you know, and asked her several questions, a bunch. You know, I still do, you know? So, I mean, every day is a learning day, and everything's a little bit different, but I would fully expect that the way in which you guys have gone, the council's gone currently and in, and in the past, it's, it's a direction that, that I think is, is great, and I think obviously you four have been on for a while, and you have probably a very good handle on it, and whoever's, you know, fortunate enough to get appointed would certainly have to look for you guys for some guidance on that.
I'm not going to let you get away with it. Make the tough decision. If you're, if you're faced with a tough, tough decision between what staff, what you've heard from staff, and what is in your heart a good saving measure for the community, how do you deal with that?
You know, I'd have to go if it's a legitimate, good savings for the community. I mean, as maybe as unpopular as that might be for, you know, the rank and file of, you know, whatever's being consolidated, you have to do the right thing, you know, by all the citizens, not just, you know, a few. So, it would probably be a very tough decision, but based on what you're telling me, I would have to go along with the consolidation. You know, I'm sure you'd probably catch a lot of heat for it, but, you know, that's what you have to do.
Thank you.
know, whatever's being consolidated, you have to do the right thing, you know, by all the citizens, not just, you know, a few. So it would probably be a very tough decision, but based on what you're telling me, I would have to go along with the consolidation. You know, I'm sure you'd probably catch a lot of heat for it, but, you know, that's what you have to do.
Thank you. Any other questions for Mr. Chase? Thank you very much.
Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you. Mr. Alberett?
Hi, good evening. My name is Felix Alberett. I have been a resident of San Bruno for about thirty-eight years. I have eight kids, and all of them have been raised in San Bruno. I'm a retired police officer, and currently, I'm a student at San Francisco State University. I have a degree in Spanish and international relations, and I'm fluent in Spanish. My interest in becoming a city council member started as a patrol officer. I enjoyed the challenge of listening to people's problems, citizens and local leaders, and trying to find a way to get a solution to it. I enjoyed going out and coordinating with local agencies, activists, and citizens, and solving these problems. And I also enjoyed the part of putting aside our differences, working as a team to help the city and the citizen of where I worked. In two thousand and four, there was an opening in the Citizens Crime Prevention Committee, and I dropped an application. I felt that this was a good way for me to help the city I live in, San Bruno, and utilizing my law enforcement background. And I felt that this was a good way to get acquainted with the local government and its citizens. And also, my goal, getting closer to my goal of becoming a city council member. I'm currently going to San Francisco State University, and I am taking, trying to get a bachelor's degree in business and accounting. My accounting emphasis is in auditing. And I was on the dean's list three semesters in a row for maintaining high grades and about four, maybe five classes short of obtaining my degree. I believe that my experience and my education has helped me prepare to be a city council member. I'm aware that I'm up for a challenge and a learning experience if I'm appointed to this position. My ability to communicate in Spanish will help me reach out and serve to other citizens beyond the reach of this capability of San Bruno right now. And also, I believe I could be a helpful asset to the city council team.
Have you reviewed our budget?
I haven't reviewed your budget.
Okay. And being a former police officer, I would like to know your thoughts on potential consolidation of safety officers, maybe other city employees?
Well, in the department that I work for, we were consolidated. Now we've separated into three different areas, giving area command. My experience is that the city has lost its ability to control the other officers in other areas because they don't like to share. But I do know that there are ways to consolidate within the city itself. I believe Sunnyvale and Brisbane, for one time, had the fire and police chief were actually like one person, maybe a public safety officer, or public safety, what's the word, leader. I believe there's other avenues. I do believe that the morale of the city workers are important, but I am open to other avenues if you show me that it can be helpful for the city.
Questions?
What do you think there's, what would you say is the most crucial thing for San Bruno to change?
The most crucial of the city council?
No.
For the city?
In the city. What's something that we really need to change?
I think we need to bring in more businesses, help the business that we have there by bringing more customers in and driving up our revenue by increasing the sales and the tax revenue.
Do you have anything in mind that you would like to accomplish if you were appointed to the city council?
Yes, I've been looking at other cities and what they've been doing. I do know that there's one city in the peninsula that, that a organization is trying to bring in a sports arena in, and I do know for the city of Manteca, it's generating about four hundred thousand dollars a year. And I'd like to be able to explore that, because that's just the rent that they pay the city, not the sales tax. And there's other ways of finding how to, I could bring, or bring business into San Bruno, increasing the revenue, because I do know that the money that we are generating from the state or feds is being reduced and cut. And we have to find other ways of generating the revenue to meet the expenses of the city.
Thank you.
Mr. Alberett?
Mr. Alberett, you stated now, and you stated in your application, that your goal is to become a member of the city council?
Yes.
I'm gonna ask you, why, we just had an election, and why didn't you run then?
At the time of the election?
Yeah.
At that time, I didn't feel-
Last month, yeah.
I'm sorry?
Last month.
Yeah, at the time that I was doing that, my court just got finalized, my retirement, and I'm on my, only have one more court hearing. And I was going, a lot of the time was being consumed because of that. And I didn't want it to affect my ability to come out for the city council. But now that the court just finished on, I believe it was the fifth of December, and there's one final court hearing, which is only, probably won't even go, once that's all completed, then I have plenty of time. But before then, I had, it was kinda complicated for me to be able to participate, because I was constantly having to deal with this issue of retiring. I was forced to retire, I wasn't, I didn't volunteer.
I can understand the timing, but when you say it's a goal to be on the city council, tell me, what did, you know, there must have been something that you wanted to achieve by being on the city council, there was something driving you to get here?
Yes, I'd like to see if I can be part of the team and see if we can make a difference in the city and improve the economic basis that we have. And I, like, I really don't need to be going to school right now, but I felt that since being retired, I wanna take advantage of the free time that I have right now. And, and business, accounting, auditing, I think there's, we can find ways to make it more successful. Thank you.
Mr. Medina, Vice Mayor?
Mr. Mayor, thank you. What background or experience do you have when it comes to labor negotiations or dealing with contracts, unions, and that area?
Besides being in the union, nothing.
That's something, being in the union, you have that one perspective.
Yeah, that's the only thing. It's basically just listen to what is being offered and voting on it. Otherwise, negotiating, going behind closed doors, or the only thing I know is what is being discussed, the information that's being released to us, because a lot of the stuff that's being discussed has not, is not being released to us until something's been written or put down in writing and distributed to the members.
Just to follow, what do you perceive our role as the city council is during the negotiation process and the contracts?
Your role is for the best of the city of San Bruno. What's best for the city. I understand that it's gonna upset a lot of the workers, but your role is to, what's best for the city.
Thank you. Any other questions? Thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Bushman?
Thank you for inviting me here today this evening. You have the, you have my papers, my community activities, I won't go over that. I think my record speaks for itself and shows my dedication to the city, but let me remind you of what you'll get if you choose me for this council seat. Seventeen years of proven dedication to improving our city and the conditions for the residents. I'm a respected team player, whether it was on the PTA, the Chamber of Commerce, or any committee I've sat on, I'm willing to be a participant or a leader whenever necessary. I've also worked with some of the staff and department heads, current department heads, and I think that they would tell you that I'm always courteous and professional when dealing with them. I'm a successful local small-business owner for about twenty-five years. The newspaper asks, what's your occupation? So you put photographer. Photographer doesn't say it, though. Again, I'm not just a photographer. I have a hundred bosses. Every year, I'm responsible, I need to listen to each of my clients so that I turn around a product that they like, that they're satisfied with. Part of my job is building relationships to continue my business. As a small-business owner, I have to plan for the future, which is, means budgeting, paying attention to revenue, and making sure I can cover operating costs. As a small-business owner, I have to stay up to date with new technologies and new laws, and I'm a, I consider myself a lifelong learner. I'm always trying to learn whatever the new thing is, and I really love learning. I know the basics of how the city runs, and I'm ready to get started right away to carry on the work of the city. My schedule is flexible, and I can make the time that is necessary for this. Also, I personally know many of the peninsula's civic leaders and elected officials, from the neighboring city council members, to the board of supervisors, to our state assemblyman Jerry Hill, to our US Congresswoman Jackie Speer. And I'm willing and able to sit down and talk with them about issues of San Bruno and ready to advocate for our city when necessary. San Bruno's mission statement says, "The city of San Bruno exists to provide exemplary services for our community that enhance and protect the quality of life." If you look at my record, I think you'll agree that I've been trying to enhance and protect the quality of life in San Bruno for years. And finally, I think I possess the same core values of our city, including integrity, teamwork, friendliness, and commitment to community. I appreciate you considering me for this appointment. Thank you.
Thank you. Questions for Mr. Bushman?
I'm destined to be the first one here. What, thank you. What do you see San Bruno doing in the next five years? What would you like us to have energy for and make time for?
I'm really excited. I've been trying to attend all the downtown and transit corridor plan meetings, the committee meetings, not just the public meetings. I'm really excited about that taking off. Again, there's great opportunity for growth, there's great opportunity for revitalization of the downtown, so that's one thing I'd like to see. Five-year plan, you know, a library would be nice, it gets down to the dollars and cents and the budget of it. I think it's important, though, whether it's the downtown plan or any other plan, we really do need to take the time and bring our, bring our business areas up as much as we can, enhance them, even if it's not the whole plan, even if it's not bringing everything, you know, all the high-rise or all the density that some of that calls for, we need to do what we can now to, again, enhance the business areas so that we continue to attract customers and that we have services here that our residents will appreciate too, and they'll keep coming back and shopping and dining in our area. Oh, and, well, the grade separation, I mean, that's, again, five-year plan, we're gonna have a nice grade separation. It'll, hopefully, it'll be something that we, that'll look nice, it'll be like a great gateway to our city, too.
One of the things we have to do sometimes is say no, even though something looks great or something that we're asked to do would please your neighbor or your family or whatever, but sometimes we have to say no. How would you deal with that?
It's, you know, you would hope that people would understand that as a council person, you make the hard decisions. That is your job. You need to make sure that the city is fiscally responsible, and you do have to make those hard, those hard calls, and that's, you know, I'm willing to make those hard calls.
Thank you.
What are your views or thoughts in regards to shared services, potential consolidations, whether it's on public safety or maybe even beyond those types?
You know, from an economical standpoint, you know, usually, shared services means you will be saving some money. With, with public safety, though, my concern is, are the police and fire and the emergency responders getting there in time? You don't wanna save money and lose response time, that's, you know, that's not acceptable. I know every couple of years that the shared, or, I'm sorry, the consolidation idea comes up. I don't see why we should not talk about it. It feels great to, you know, go talk to Millbrae, or Burley Game, or Hillsborough, whoever it is, and let's see what the plans are, let's see if there's opportunity for, you know, maybe it's not four cities, maybe it's just two cities, willing to look at it, just, again, the bottom line is you don't want the response times to be affected.
I know you just talked about your thoughts for five years, now to five years away, but what would you think would be your three top priorities?
Well, the downtown area and the business district, I think, like I said, regardless of whether we do the big downtown plan that the corridor, transit corridor plan is, we need to do what we can now to improve those business areas, whether it be clean up the parking lots and make those prettier, whether it's, take away any disincentives that people have to come to our business districts. Did you say top three?
Yeah, you got two more to go.
Sorry, I was like, was it five or three? Okay. You know, again, with the budget as it is, it's kind of a backhanded way, but we need to make sure our public safety doesn't hurt in the next five years because of, we make sure public safety doesn't hurt because of the budget. So we need to, we need to maintain those response times and that service. And number three, I'm worried about the grade separation. You know, again, you would hope that it comes through and we're not too disrupted, and what's left is something nice, but it's just, I just wanna make sure there's attention paid to that.
Thank you.
Here I go. Scott, one of the first things you stated is that you're a respected team player. And, I mean, I know you, and we've worked together. Can you give an example of where you have been a team player, even though you may not have agreed with the decision of the team? And how did you deal with that?
Well, I'll use the chamber as an example. We've set, every year, we had an annual planning meeting, and we prioritized the goals of the chamber. And, you know, sometimes, the events that we decided to participate in weren't the events that I thought were that important. But I was right there with them, because as a group, we decided that. And I stand with the group, I stand with that decision, and I do whatever it takes from, you know, the lowest job to the highest job, and I wanna make sure that job gets, if that's what's decided, I wanna make sure that job gets done as best as it can, so I just move forward with it.
Were you, were you satisfied that you fought hard enough for your, you know, for your, for the things that you wanted?
Oh, yes, certainly, yeah. And I, and I think, again, my record would show that I stand up, and whether it's an unpopular view, I'll stand up, and I'll come here and take my three minutes and tell you, here's what I think, and, you know, this is what I think you should do. And at the end of the day, if you decide not to, I have no ill feelings, I would still participate with, you know, in this, in this environment with you, and that has happened. And, you know, I know that you, as a board, has to, again, prioritize and make those decisions. I'm willing to, you know, be part of that, and again, I wouldn't be one that would say, oh, well, I'm gonna take my-
You won't pout, yeah.
Play, you know, play my game, yeah.
And lastly, I believe you're familiar with, being that you ran for the council a few years ago, and so you're familiar with the operations of the city, and you realize what we've been going through the last few years.
Certainly.
Let's say we, I mean, let's say you sit up, you sit up here, and in the next few months, Jim O'Leary comes forward and tells us that we have a half a million dollar shortfall. shortfall. And we've laid off, I mean, we've done furlough, we've done, so all those cuts are there. Have any idea where you'd start in trying to absorb that half a million?
A half a million's a big, a big number.
You get hit with big numbers.
For a half million, honestly, I don't know. But here's what I, you know, I've looked through the budget, I've skimmed through it, I planned to sit down and read the whole thing, cover to cover. I've read draft EIRs and EIRs, so that's not a problem. The things that pop out at me, there's some overtime, there's some big overtime issues in there. And again, these are things that you've probably looked through, so I don't want to second-guess you, but there's big overtime in there, and there's, there's big benefit, there's a big chunk of benefits in there. Those are the two first, the two places that I would go first. For revenue, one of the ideas that I thought of and then noticed that on the National League of Cities is you identify those businesses that are in town that are operating without business license and permits, and that could bring you in some more additional revenue. And the last piece is, again, not to second-guess, because I haven't been, I haven't sat down when you've made the decisions, is I know usually we're talking about the half million or the 250,000 or the 100,000. So if that's what you've been looking at, or if that's what departments have been looking at, department heads have been looking at, my thought is, sometimes, you know, and I know this as a small business owner, sometimes it's those little dollars that add up. So if you're looking for the big things, maybe it's harder sometimes, but if you say, okay, let's, we have, what, 200 employees in the city? Let's find 100 ways to save $1,000. You've just saved $100,000 if half of your employees come up with an idea.
That's pretty good. Thank you.
Anything else? Thank you very much, Scott.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Marshall?
Mayor Wayne and members of the council. I've lived in San Bruno since I was born in 1975, and I was exposed to San Bruno politics at a very young age and for a very long time, as my father served as mayor from 1980 to 1992. It was during those impressionable years that I learned how important it is to take an active role in my community. During that time, I watched hundreds of council meetings, and as a young boy, I can remember getting caught up in many of the issues, always forming my own opinion, even if it opposed my father's. When I was eight years old, the big-ticket item in front of the council was fireworks and whether they should outlaw safe and sane fireworks in the city. The discussion was going on, and I was watching at home with my mom, and I urged her to take me to the meeting so I could put in my two cents. Now Beverly Bernard, a former council member, was openly opposed at that time, and she also had the deciding vote. Beverly will now tell you that it was my comments that swayed her to vote in favor of fireworks, which continue to fund numerous San Bruno nonprofits to this day. I have a newspaper article to prove it, too. When learning about this opportunity for appointment to the city council, that same passion, when I was eight years old, resurfaced. Some of my reasons for applying. First, given my age, I believe I can add a different perspective to the council. I'm very happy with its current direction, and I would hope to reinvigorate this council with my energy and willingness to work so we can continue on the same path. Should I be fortunate enough to secure this appointment, I really believe that my youth will be an asset and that I will represent a segment of the community that is currently underrepresented on the council. My current role as Park and Rec Commissioner has demonstrated this, and the experience I have gained on the commission will hold me in good stead as a council member. Secondly, I believe the council has done an excellent job during these difficult economic times, and that will benefit even further by adding another business-minded member like me. Despite having begun my real estate career in a declining market, my business is thriving and continues to grow each year. I have learned to be patient, patient yet persistent in this market, and I believe my success has come from my ability to respectfully listen to and reason with people on a daily basis. These are excellent traits for a council member to have. My job as a real estate professional will also benefit the council as they make crucial decisions about the many development projects currently underway and on the horizon. I look forward to working with San Bruno's Planning and Building Department, with whom I have so much respect for and confidence in. Finally, I'm applying because I have a lot invested in the city, and I'm not the type of person to just sit back and not care. I'm a San Bruno homeowner, business owner, and landlord. I have a wife and two young daughters who work and go to school in San Bruno, and I have a database of hundreds of family, friends, and clients who are also San Bruno residents and whose future depends on an approachable, hard-working, and open-minded city government. So thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. I have a question. You talked about the segment that's underrepresented. Tell me about that segment.
Well, I work with a lot of first-time homebuyers in my generation, and they don't seem to have a passion or interest in city government. They just kind of take things the way they're, way it is. They don't know the opportunities you have to get involved and to, you know, put in your two cents about how you feel. I think since I got involved with the dog park commission, I've urged other people to come to the meetings, to let me know what's going on, what are the issues going on? What do you like about San Bruno? What don't you like about San Bruno? Why did you come here? Why would you move here? You know, I learn from people every day why they moved here or why they're moving away from here. And so I get that opportunity already on a daily basis.
Thank you. Questions?
I'm not ready yet.
How else would you engage people of any age or anybody in San Bruno? Our voting record this last election was dismal. We had 18,000 registered voters, and I believe not even 4,000 voted. What would you do as a councilperson?
Well, which is why it's unfortunate I'm not having the opportunity to run. Maybe in two years, I'll have that opportunity to run an election and get out there and go to these same people who I'm speaking of and urge them to, if they're not already registered, to vote, to do that and to get out there and vote.
I'm sorry, I wasn't very clear. As, if you were a councilperson, how would you engage people to be more active in their government, in their local government, in city council?
The same way that I've done. I started off on a commission, so that's one thing they could do, even if they don't want that much of a commitment, just to attend different community events. I don't know how people realize how much even like the park and rec offers the citizens, different programs, classes, educational, recreational, there's so much stuff that I think that a lot of residents don't even know about.
Okay.
Vice Mayor?
A couple of questions. What approach would you take as a council member, if appointed to, now we're gonna be dealing with the budget, of course, and who knows what that will bring? But what approach might you have in order to balance or address the issues that we may face during budgetary times?
Like, like what you were talking about to asking the other candidates?
I guess we can, you can go off that if you like. I mean, obviously, we'll sit down, we'll have budget study sessions, we'll have the binaries that we've all heard about, how they've grown since Ken started. And so how might you engage yourself if we do have a shortfall? What areas or thoughts might you have as how we could help balance that if that were to occur? That's an example.
Well, I get the question, but I think it's a little hard to speculate on what that might be without having, knowing what the issue is and hearing the other side of the issue. It's hard to really, I would hate to-
That's fair. Let me, I wasn't clear. Let me be more specific. Let's say we're gonna sit down and go through the 2010, 2011 budget, and we're finding there's a 500,000, I'll use the example that was given to somebody else, $500,000 shortfall. What areas or issues might you think to bring forward or ideas in order to try to balance that budget? So obviously, which is required by law, so we can't just print our money like other feds do. So we've got to balance. So what thoughts might you have to help to address that issue?
Well, I do have some thoughts, but I don't know how comfortable I feel about sharing them now because not, listen, the four of you have been up there for a while, you have a lot of experience with-
I'm still pretty young, I'm afraid. Just want to, you know.
I didn't mention age, I said you've been up there a while.
They say I'm getting older though by the day.
You've had experience with these budget talks, and, of course, I have all kinds of thoughts going in my head, maybe we could do this, maybe we could do that, but a lot of them, I would say, a lot of them probably wouldn't make any sense. You've probably already explored them. So until I'm actually on the council and have the opportunity to learn more, throw these ideas past, you know, you all who have been there already, maybe we, because these are things maybe have already been talked about, I would not, I don't know how comfortable I feel about just throwing out ideas off the top of my head.
And another question, if I may. What, where do you see the council as far as how it engages itself during labor negotiations with our MOUs and the contracts with the staff?
Well, I haven't been involved with those labor. Can you-
Sure. How do you, how do you see or understand our role is during negotiation times when the contracts for the various bargaining units are up, which they will be next year? But I mean, where do you see our role and where it lies?
So your role is to, obviously, research the budget, see where any possible money can be made up. But you also, I know you also have to take in consideration where the staff is coming from. I'm sure there's, there's issues that you can't cut money for public safety. So as a council, I imagine you make the best decision you possibly can to save the city money without affecting the public safety.
Thank you.
Mr. Ibarra?
Okay. Stephen, you're gonna have to divulge something. And I'm gonna ask what council member Irene asked previous, what, give us three top priorities that you'd like to see accomplished, you know, when you, if you were to come onto the council.
Number one is by far, it has to be the downtown. San Bruno's downtown is not the same downtown it was when I grew up. I remember going after school, and everyone leaves school, and we'd go have a sandwich at Roma Delica Testin, and it was, everyone was on San Mateo Avenue. That has completely, completely changed. How it got that way, I have no idea, but I know that the city is making huge steps in trying to build that area back up, and I'm definitely on board with that. And anything I could do to make it go faster, or to, anything I could add to make it better, that would be number one priority for me.
That's one.
That's one. Number two-
Scott had five. I was thinking of five.
Number two, kind of piggybacks on that development, I would like to see more residential use of the downtown, because there's a lot of young, possible homeowners in San Francisco who can't afford to live in San Francisco, but could afford to live in a condo in San Bruno and have the opportunity to hop on Bart and get to work in San Francisco. So I think we're really missing out on that right now. And number three, I think, being on the Park and Rec Commission, there's some open space issues that I think we can improve. We are looking to find another existing dog park, whether by using an existing park or finding a brand-new space, which we may have done, I think would be great, and also with the possible developments of Lions Field. And I know one of the other candidates spoke about a multipurpose athletic field that we could rent out. Well, we're talking about that right now on the Park and Rec Commission, and about turning Lions Field into that field, a multipurpose field with the all-weather turf and really, using it not only for San Bruno citizens, but to get some income from outside groups.
And finally, somewhat related to this, but I know you have young children, you have a young family, you are young. What would be your, being on the Park and Rec Commission and being facilities, what would be your, your thinking of your children, you know, in the next few years? What would, you know, what would you see as the, you know, what you would think would be the best thing to improve, you know, as far as a recreation facility or improvement in this city?
Well, the-
Whether, you know, given any kind of financial, but what do you feel is most important, you know, for our growing youth?
I think school is becoming a big issue. Our grammar schools are incredible. They score as high as many other cities. I think we take a little bit of hit when we get to the junior high school, and I think that needs to be addressed, because when I, like I said, I hear white people are leaving San Bruno, and that always comes up. They want to get out before sixth grade. And I know that the city council has, well, I don't know. I've heard that it's not, we have no control over the schools, but if there's a way that the city council can work together with the school district to figure out a way to bring Parkside to better, bigger, or I don't know what, that would be a huge improvement.
Anything else for Mr. Marshall?
I have one. We often have to put aside our personal preferences for the greater good of San Bruno. And being a real estate person, you probably have issues already with the planning commission. So how do you deal with that kind of thing? And how might you look at things differently, both negative and positive, as a real estate person?
I'm not sure I get-
I probably, I asked you two questions, that's my fault. How do you divorce yourself when you're making planning commission decisions and look at the greater good?
Well, I'm on the dog, I'm on the-
Oh, I'm sorry. You're not the planning commission. That's why you can't answer the question. Duh, sorry. Let's back up there.
But as a Realtor, I definitely have issues at times with the building and planning departments. I mean, issues come up.
So, so one of the things we have to do as councilpeople is pull away from that. We have to divorce ourselves and pull away from staff and divorce our business from what we're doing as a councilperson. So how do you think you would do that? Keeping in mind that the laws have changed tremendously from when your dad was the mayor.
No, I know, and I know that if I have a property even close to where we're discussing, I have to, I cannot vote on the issue. So I don't know if I can do anything about it. I just have to step down. If I'm answering your question, I'm-
Yeah.
I can tell you how I deal with it now.
Okay.
If there's any issues with the planning or building department, I like to address it head-on. I don't like to play games. I want to know what the issue is, how can we resolve it, and how can we resolve it the right way? That's the bottom line. As a Realtor, I need to disclose everything, and as a planning department, they have to do everything by the books. So I don't know if that's what you're getting to. I'm not sure.
Sometimes the decisions we make, something, you would make a decision one way if you were a real estate person, acting as a real estate person, and another way as a councilperson. So you have to look at problems two different ways sometimes. So I just wanted to know if you had given any thought to that.
I have, but I think as a homeowner myself, not just a real estate person, I want to make the best decision for other homeowners as well.
Okay. Fair enough. Thank you.
Anything else for Mr. Marshall? Stephen, thank you very much. Mr. Pierce?
Wow. Didn't mean to clear the room. First of all, I want to thank the mayor and the council for giving me time tonight to speak. I appreciate that, and also staff. It's gonna be real simple. The best part about it is you've asked all the hard questions already, so I think I'll be able to answer anything you have left. Twenty-seven years ago, my life changed dramatically. We had a daughter, and three and a half, four years after that, our second daughter was born, and we made a big decision. Up until that time, I'd been a member, active member of the community that wherever I lived, as a coach of my brother, my sisters, and working with the schools that I was involved with. But when the daughters were born, we had to make a decision, and Mr. Marshall was touching on, and that was to find a place to raise our family with a good school district, and the decision we made was to leave San Francisco and come to San Bruno. It was a city that I had some knowledge of, because one of my jobs, in fact, where I met my wife, was bringing kids from San Francisco down to San Bruno Mountain Park for summer camp, and I fell in love with the city then, and I had the opportunity, when the kids were born, to come back down here. Immediately upon moving into San Bruno with kids, you know what to do, you start getting involved- And I fell in love with the city then, and I had the opportunity when the kids were born to come back down here. Immediately upon moving into San Bruno with kids, you know what to do. You start getting involved with all the programs that the kids are involved with. And steadily, but slowly but steadily, I've been growing within those programs. Started with the schools, extended to sports groups, and progressed to the Citizens Oversight Committee for the San Bruno High School District, which was a huge learning experience for me. Along the way, my wife and I have both become heavily involved in the soccer community at the local area and national level. And we have a pretty good perspective of more than just this community. What I would bring to this council and to the city is a passion that I've lived with for my whole life and developed through the various programs I've worked. I'm a coach at heart, a team builder, and a facilitator. And I really understand what it takes to solve problems, overcome concerns, and set objectives. And that's what I look forward to. I'm impressed with this city. I have no intention of leaving this city. The council has been doing a great job for many years, and as well as staff. I've really had a chance through the past couple of years to come to a couple of meetings. Some of the presentations have astounded me, and you'd never take for granted what the city is doing, but I'm very impressed with the direction that we're going, and I'd like to continue working with this team.
Greg, if you, in your position with AYSO, is it a policy position? In other words, do you make policy? Or do you just, is it more of a day-to-day involvement in team efforts and things?
I'm a volunteer. And basically, I started out on the local level, Region 249, which represents San Bruno. And along the way, we've become involved in the area level, which is the immediate cities surrounding here, Pacifica, Pacifica, Daly City, South San Francisco, Brisbane, and Millbrae. No. The answer, simple answer is no. I work with developing the new regions and existing regions, and I also work every Saturday with the, the local group.
Okay. You also mentioned that you're a trained facilitator?
Yes.
Can you tell me a little bit about that?
A trained facilitator? Glad you asked. What I've done was I received some training at work many years ago, and it's allowed me to be, to work with several groups within the San Francisco Chronicle to facilitate reaching goals. And basically what you do is, there's an objective, a concern that is set, that a client is identified. And the role of the facilitator is to help the client solve that issue, whether it's budget, whether it's bringing in a new process, whether it's eliminating positions. You develop a clear set of goals, you build a team that understands the assignment, you meet until the task is complete, document and report the status of work to the client, complete all assignments on time. And one of the most important parts of it is to measure what you've accomplished to make sure that you stay on course. That answer?
Yeah. Have you been involved in any kind of labor negotiations through your, your job at the Chronicle?
Oh, not as a labor negotiator, but I do represent the company with the labor force. There's several unions involved with the San Francisco Chronicle. So I, we have collective bargaining agreement that we have to hold them accountable for too.
Okay. Thank you. Questions? Irene?
They keep looking at me. Thank you. Where would you put your energy for the next five years in San Bruno? Or where should San Bruno put its energy?
I'm gonna echo what several people have said already. And one of the, the main areas is downtown. It's without a doubt a huge area of opportunity to, to improve what we have and to also generate income and to bring more citizens to San Bruno. More active, newer thoughts, newer ideas, energy. That's the main area that I see.
Okay. If you could change one thing about San Bruno, what would you change?
Well, it's not a perfect city by any means, but, you know, I hate to do this, but I'm gonna also agree with the school system. We were lucky. We were very active parents in the school district, and that seemed to help with the process. But I'm also involved with the school, I've been involved with all the schools now, and I still see quite a few kids not being serviced by the schools. Now, I'm not sure what the council's ability to influence the school districts, but I certainly know that as council members and representatives of San Bruno, you have an obligation to ensure that the students, the youth of this city are served. And if you're not already involved, you should get more involved and, and make, make sure that our kids are getting the best education possible.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Vice Mayor.
What is your view or position on the potential or possibility of shared services, whether it be public safety or other departments?
Somehow I knew you'd ask that question. And luckily, I've had a few minutes.
I'm trading off.
Yeah. The environment that I work in has undergone so many changes to San Francisco Chronicle. We had a joint operating agreement for many years. When the economy changed, the way we did business changed. And it's been a tough process for many years to stay viable, to stay in the business of making money as well as providing a service. You are obligated, I, I'm sure you've taken an oath, I know you've taken an oath, and I'm not sure what the oath says, but I'm sure it states that you have an obligation to uphold the best interests of the city as, and to listen to staff as well, and to come to a decision that best serves the majority.
I can just tell you, the oath doesn't tell us we have to listen to staff. I think they would like to put that in the oath.
Uphold the Constitution.
But, going back to a, a previous question I had asked as far as budgetary process. So again, we're gonna sit at 2010, 2011, look at and review budgetary issues. Do you have any views or ideas of what we might do or could do if we were faced with, let's just, we'll use the number we've been using tonight, a $500,000 shortfall?
Well, you're gonna have to do what you have to do to stay in business. I wanted to compliment the staff. They, they had a great meeting where they sat down with all the groups, and I don't recall what the name of the, the meeting was, but the, this was at the time when a lot of cities, I believe it was Richmond or Martinez was going bankrupt. And the city staff took, took a, a strong approach to ensuring that they did not go down the same route that some other cities had gone down. And you, you do what you have to do. You have to make tough decisions. You have to make smart decisions, and you have to take a good look at what the options are, work together as a team, a team of council members and the mayor, as well as the staff, and come up with a decision that, that's good for the city. And it's a hard one sometimes, but probably it's gonna be a pretty, much of a lightbulb type idea that's right before you. It's, they're, they're not easy, but if you want to stay in business and offer the best services and attract new citizens, and that's what you have to do.
Ken?
Greg, in twenty-two and a half years, how, how do you feel about San Bruno now? Other than, other than the downtown?
I see opportunities. The, the years that I've spent on the Park and Rec Commission, it's, it's a passion for me with the youth. We're making, we're making advances on how we serve the community, but we certainly have opportunities there as well. Youth organizations in the city can improve what, what they're offering. I've also traveled to many, many cities, and I know that other cities have done a little better job at greening, at providing services. But I'm satisfied that the opportunities are here and that we're aware of them, and that we're gonna take steps to, to remedy them.
Okay. Come up with any, deal with any difficult decisions when you were serving on the, the high school, the Citizens Oversight Committee?
Absolutely.
Tell us about one.
The, the biggest one was that.
I know you did.
Yeah. No, we, we were, it's, it's a sore point with me and several other members that were on the committee, that we were not able to fully do the duty that we were asked to do. And we weren't really minding the store as properly as we should have. It was a great learning experience. I had no experience with any kind of a, with money at that level, but I, I learned enough that it is not monopoly money, which is the way that it was presented to us. And we made some tough decisions. We were really only an advisory committee, but we, we added our input. I worked alongside the mayor, ex-mayor of Burlingame. The mayor of Foster City was involved with the group as well, as, as well as many leaders of industry in, in the neighborhood. And I wish we could have completed and got the best money, the best bang for the money that was out there. I don't feel we did, and I'm, I'm kind of embarrassed about that.
With that learning experience, what would, do you, do you think you can bring something like that to the city with what you've, what you've, what you've experienced in bureaucracy and, and government, government bureaucracy?
Absolutely. We were, I was a little naive, not so naive now. I've had a chance to work with a couple of better leaders in that, since that time, and at a local and a national level. And you really have to look and work a little bit harder than we looked and worked, and you just can't listen to what they're trying to give you. Again, it was an advisory committee, so there really wasn't an opportunity to do much besides listen and make some advisory remarks. They weren't asking us to make policy decisions. But if you are going to be making policy decisions, it's your obligation to study and investigate and make sure the decisions you're making are factual and, and best for the community.
Great. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anything else for Mr. Pierce? Greg, thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Mr. Salazar.
Good evening. I'd also like to thank you all for making time to listen to us tonight and the city staff for coming out and making time for us. My name is Michael Salazar. Together with my wife Sandra and my two children, Michael and Nicholas, we've lived here in San Bruno for five years. I'm here tonight because I believe San Bruno is a great place to raise a family, and I'd like to do my part to help keep it that way. I have a long history of volunteering, going all the way back to my days in college. And I found out back then that there is a satisfaction you get from serving your community that you just can't get any other way. Sometimes it may seem thankless, but it is definitely worth it. I'm involved in a few activities here in the city, on a city committee, the Crime Prevention Committee, and I am involved in a number of activities through my church, and heavily involved in my, my son's school. I'm very committed to the city's activities, and I believe that example is one of the best ways of, of teaching my children, and they also participate in a number of activities in the city with me. I am very proud of them and their commitment as well. My interest in city government started a few years back. Some of you may remember, I ran for office, for elected office unsuccessfully, unfortunately, but it was a wonderful experience. And during that time, I did learn a lot about the work that you do, about the work that our city staff does, and about the many processes and procedures that are involved. And although I came in with very little knowledge and very little experience, I did have a very strong interest that remains to this day, and certainly something that brought me back here today. I also learned that there are a lot of downsides to sitting up there where you are. I know that there are some hard decisions to be made. Some of those decisions are not popular, and it is difficult. It's a huge commitment. I've seen the effort that all of you put forward, the effort that our staff puts forward, the countless hours, the shaking hands, the getting out there and talking to people. It's a huge commitment. I understand that, and I am willing and actually excited about being part of that. I wanted to share a little bit about my professional background as I see that it's relative to serving on the city council. I have about fifteen years of experience as a manager in large corporations. And during those fifteen years, I have been involved in a lot of different activities, including budget and planning, operations management, technology improvement, and a number of other things that I believe would be directly relevant to the decisions the city council is also involved in. I also have some experience in negotiations, although not with labor. I, I have had a lot of experience in negotiating with vendors and with, within departments within the companies that I worked for. I have also developed a, a pretty good ability to create consensus and to work with other people. Certainly, I know that's, that's something that, that is key to the work that you do here. I believe I have a very strong sense of fairness and justice, and I think that, that also would be a great asset to the city council. I want to keep my comments brief. In conclusion, I just want to say that in comparison to some of the other applicants here today, my time in San Bruno is relatively short, but I would ask you to consider the things that I have done with my short time here in the city. And regardless of the decision that, that you will make tomorrow, I just want to say that I look forward to working with you in one capacity and another in the years to come. Thank you.
Mr. Ibarra.
Right. Five years is not a long time. And, and I appreciate that a few years ago that you came forward and you've gotten active and you stayed active. But it might give us a better, you might have a better perspective or better view of, of San Bruno, being that you've been here a relatively short time. So can you probably elaborate on what you've seen in comparison to other places that you've lived and what, you know, what, what is it that keeps you here? What, what is it that may keep you here, you know, in the longer term?
I would have to say that the sense of community that I found here in San Bruno is, is what, definitely what attracted me to the city and what will definitely keep me here. I, I've lived in a number of different places. As I went to college, went off to do different jobs, and I don't think I've been anywhere where I have, where I've felt that, that I and my family were as welcome. Where I've seen so many people really dedicated to the community that are so willing to dedicate their time and come out and, and help each other. I, I think that's it.
Unfortunately, we gotta talk about money and things. And, you know, in, in your involvement as for running for mayor and things, I know you, I mean, you, you probably boned up on some of that stuff back then. Since then, things have gotten a little more challenging. What do you know about the challenge, you know, the things that we're going through right now? And how, how would you be able to contribute to dealing with financial issues here in the, sitting on the council?
We're, we're definitely facing some, some challenges now. And I know that there are some cuts that have been made, and there are things in the works now, the consolidation of, of our services that's already come up tonight. While, while I think that the city council has done a very good job of looking at a number of opportunities, I think that, that in the end, what, what would really make, what we really need to focus on is maintaining the quality of life for the people of San Bruno. And a lot of times, even though the, the, the financial decisions. the financial decisions are, are important, and really, you can't do anything without money, my opinion is that we really do need to focus on, on really maintaining the city, the city standards, and not impacting our, our staff so much. I, I think with, with the furloughs, I think the furloughs are, while, while probably painful, have been a good way of avoiding layoffs. And that's something I really wouldn't like to see. I don't know how much deeper cuts can go. I haven't looked recently at the budget in detail. And I know something that probably is not a popular topic, and something that historically in San Bruno hasn't been very popular at all, is raising taxes if, if necessary. But I believe that if, if it came to the point where we had made all the cuts that were, that were possible while maintaining our services, I believe that we could make a very strong case for that. And I believe that the people of San Bruno would be willing to accept it if we could justify that and prove that it is, in fact, necessary.
Putting money aside, pretending you don't have to worry about money, what would you do for San Bruno? What would be the one thing that you would want to leave if you served for even just two years?
I would say that, that one thing that I would like to see San Bruno do is become a leader in sustainability. And I, I think there are, there are some opportunities that, that we have from, from the government standpoint, to encourage private citizens, as well as some of the decisions that we make, to really take, take a leadership role in, in creating a sustainable environment, whether it be conserving water, limiting, or minimizing our, our carbon footprint, and reducing waste, things like that. I, I know that, that there are some things being done currently, but having our city really become a leader is something I think that, that I could, I could get really excited about, and something that I would be proud to have as a legacy of having served on the council.
Thank you.
What do you see as the biggest challenges facing our city this next year?
Aside from the budget.
Aside, okay. Irene just said aside with the budget because she thinks we've gone over that enough. But maybe aside the budget.
Aside from the budget, something that, that I feel is very important is, is, is public safety. And I think San Bruno does remain a, a very safe city compared to other cities in our area. But we, we do have our issues with, with crime, with gangs. And something that prompted me to apply for the, the Crime Prevention Committee was, was my concern for that. We've heard, I've heard a few people mention schools, and how we do need to focus on education, and I, I completely agree with that. But I think that focusing also on the opportunities that we have for young people, both in school and out of school, to prevent them from falling into some bad habits is, is going to be critical to, to keeping San Bruno a, a good place to raise your children.
Where, where do you see the council's role as far as when it comes to labor negotiations, the contracts, the MOUs, since we'll be dealing with those next year?
Again, the role of the city council there would be to represent the people of San Bruno. It, it is a representative government, and, and the people that sit in those chairs represent the, the thoughts of, of the people of San Bruno. But, but I would also add that maintaining the morale and the dignity of the people that serve the community is also extremely important in my view.
You just glanced over it earlier about consolidation. Now, you're on the Citizens' Crime Prevention, and you obviously deal with the police department in a small way. But there have been some talks up and down the peninsula about consolidating fire, police, and we could save some money. Any, any thoughts on that?
I, I have thought about it, and I've read some of the commentaries regarding the consolidation. Something that would concern me is, is, again, maintaining the level of service that, that we enjoy today, and, and also the morale of the people that are affected by it. I, I know that, that it is a, a pretty significant and important financial decision, but at the same time, I, I'd like to see all of these other things at least considered before the final decision is made, and possibly get input from some of, some other communities that have gone through this, and really understand the challenges so that we could make a reasonable decision about whether the, the definite downside of it out, matches or doesn't outweigh the benefit.
Okay. Any other questions for Mr. Salazar? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. On behalf of the entire city council, I want to thank you for, for your applications. It's a, it's a big step. It's a lot of work. It's very enjoyable most of the time. And it's, getting to serve a community like this is, you just can't say enough about it. So whatever our decision is tomorrow night, I want to thank you ahead of time for, for applying. It's, it's very generous. Item number five, closed session. We will be going into a closed session for the purpose of providing direction to legal counsel, whether to initiate litigation, California Government Code S 549, 56.9C. There will be nothing to report following this closed session.
Yes.
We did public comment already.
No, I mean on...
Well, yeah, would anybody from the public like to speak regarding our, speakers tonight? Our applicants? No? All right. Thank you. And we will be adjourning to a special city council meeting to be held tomorrow night, December 16th, at 6:00 PM at City Hall in 567 El Camino Real, San Bruno, to appoint a new council member. Thank you very much. Meeting is adjourned.